I think it's time to do some introductions for, because I have been remiss. It dawned on me the other day. I'll start to my right with Mr. Chuck Hart, member of the board, Susan Eyre, our assistant, Police Chief Joel Johnson, Department of Public Works Director Phil Coombs, Building Inspector Code Enforcement Officer Pedro Villa, Library Director Melissa Mannion, Recreation Director Paul Butler, Finance Director at Human Resources Paula Mahoney, and Fire Chief Graham Pellerin. I do know you. Board members Laurie Schwett and Glenn Koppleman, Board Vice Chair, and your Chairman Eli Alessio. How did I do that?
Not bad for a Monday morning.
Not bad for a Monday morning, exactly, exactly. Okay, and so, well, the first item of business is reports in from the boards and committees, and I'm going to start with the library director and to change it around a little bit. Melissa Mannion.
So, just fun things coming up. We have our annual plant sale from the Friends of the Library on May 18th at 10:00. I've been told it's the best plant sale in, on the seacoast in the area. Don't miss it, it's great. They're also doing a raffle coming in May, and this is our big fun money raiser for the, for the library. The Friends raise money to support the library. We always have fun at that. We have arranged summer reading, June 22nd. We have frisbee dogs coming to the plains, so dogs that jump really high in the air and catch frisbees. We're inviting everyone to come at 12:30, bring a picnic lunch. I think that's really going to be fun. The library is starting a walking club with a physical therapist who has been trained by the Arthritis Foundation in helping people avoid falls and how to wear the right footwear. So, he's going to start off by teaching that, and then Michelle, our Adult Services Librarian, is going to lead people in walking, probably around the plains. We're looking for a flat area, and that'll be before the library opens. Michelle's also starting a cookbook club, so everybody will read the same cookbook, and then she'll bring in a dish from, from the cookbook. She loves to cook. May 11th, we have Live Free or Die: The Contested History of the Words on Your License Plate, which is a New Hampshire humanities program. And our senior seminar in May is Better Sleep for Older Adults. Top of the saying, physical therapist. So, we're really ramping up programming. Everything is running very smoothly. I really don't have anything else to report, but I hope you come for some of our programs.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions or comments? May Paul Butler, Recreation.
Good morning, everybody. I don't have a handout. Printer wasn't working today, so we have an event coming up on June 1st with Susan's ukulele group and a presentation about black bears. So, our advertisement's going to be a black bear playing the ukulele. Caitlin came up with that, so.
Now, that should be interesting.
Yeah. So, they're both kind of fun, you know, that person does the black bear. He's very informative and usually get a small crowd for that, and hopefully a nice big crowd for both, but the ukulele playing afterwards, so that's something to look forward to. The Serve with Liberty group is coming on the 10th and the 17th to help clean up the rec, and we're going to paint the inside, so it'll be a different color, liven it up a little bit. And thanks to Phil, we have, the staff room has been rearranged and will continue to be rearranged, putting the lockers inside for the staff, so it's a little bit more, a little safer, a little more confidential for them to leave their stuff there. I don't have to worry about kids going in there. So, that'll be a good upgrade. Haven't had much interest in this yet, but I, we have a surfing program we're going to do with summer sessions for kids. It's a week, like, two hours, five days a week. I think it's $299. Haven't got any interest yet, but hoping that might be a fun thing for kids to do. And then the main thing, I guess, is, and I apologize if I don't remember if we resolved this, but I don't think we did, is the trunk or treat. And I know it's, seems far away, but it's going to be, going to be here before we know it, and if we want to, if we need to do any planning or any adjustments to anything, I think we need to start thinking about that more. But, and I apologize, I forgot what.
So, when you say that, Paul, was it, is it the issue of the location and parking and so forth and so on?
And safety. Safety's the main thing, yeah. Joel, understandably, is concerned. His officer, Officer Zilick, was there, and he almost got hit twice, and he's, no, it's, it's a busy, people fly down that Main Street, and so it became, it became very busy. My suggestion, I don't think it's held by everybody or thought the same, is to, is to block off for a couple hours, to block off the area, starting at the boat ramp up to Danville Road and making that parking and people, because people come in and out. They don't come for, generally for the two hours, although they've been staying longer than they have in the past. Okay, great, go for it.
We're going to shut down 111 and Main Street. More look at shutting down 111 and Main Street and open up, close off, I mean, let the traffic come from Main Street toward 111. We'll keep one lane open.
Okay.
We'll have the eastbound lane open for westbound traffic. This way, nobody's going to be in the westbound lane near your people having their event.
So, alongside of the rec center, there wouldn't be anybody.
There'd be nobody going down the westbound lane.
Okay, because that could be like a walking area.
Yeah, it could very well easily do that. What do you think?
I think the only other part of that would be just opening up the State Shed Collection Center area for parking, so that people can be kind of cachet there and then guided along.
Yeah, we definitely ran out of parking, and I, I think you had said you don't want people parking along Wildly Point.
No, that was, because it was a concern for the fire department, because if there is a fire, we can't.
That's too, yeah, it's too tight, yeah. I like that idea. So, on the lane across from, so Main Street, the lane next to the rec center would be walking, and the other one would be people going towards town, or towards.
No, people in town going toward the rec center are going to be in the eastbound lane, the opposite lane. We're going to have, we'll cone it off, so they have to detour down to the opposite lane.
Okay.
We'll shut off 111, so nobody can come into.
Right, they'd have to go down, up until 125 and loop around New Boston Road if they wanted to come back in through that section.
Right, right, yeah. I mean, anything to slow people down is really the issue, I mean.
Yeah, I just, I don't want anybody to get hit. Somebody, it's going to happen if we don't do something like that.
Right.
Let's give it a try. That sounds like a good solution.
We can also, we can also can use the radar trail.
The other thing we have is we were donated some speed bump, pre-made rubber speed bump things that are pretty substantial, so they would, actually, if we're doing something like that where we're diverting, kind of gets people's attention.
Yep.
So, put those out.
Great.
That's what they get for driving a little right.
That way, we leave the event at the rec center.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I think it's essential to have it there, because there's still people in town that don't know we have a rec center. Oh, I thought there was a childcare place, or we have a rec center, or, you know, they, so, we've said it for many years as a committee, we've said that we need to have things there so that people know what's going on there and hopefully come back more often, so.
Sounds good.
And that one way sounds like a better option than just blocking off the whole road, because that, then you'd have two sets of detours to.
Right, so I'd need an officer at the, at the old highway department.
Right.
To get people across, and I'd probably put one down toward the Wildly Point area, just to make sure that nobody comes out of Wildly Point.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And I think that will cover it.
Whatever, yeah, whatever you need. I mean, I think that it's important to keep it where it is, and.
Somebody's going to try to get around the 111 on the Main Street, there's no question.
Right.
Never fails.
But it just slows people down, because they just, even if they are trying to get there, I think it'll be.
We'll put the radar board up, too, and let them know.
Oh, yeah, in advance, let them know that it will be shut down. Maybe a couple of days in advance.
I don't think we need to do it in advance.
No?
No, we can do it in five minutes.
Good advertising for the trick or treat, too.
But that's not, that's not a message board, is it? Or is it?
Yeah, it's a message board. So, maybe, want to put a message up a couple of days before? Yep.
That'd be great, thank you.
That'll work.
I'm sorry, with message board on?
We have a rec center, that's what it's going to say.
Honk if you know you had that.
Honk if you have some treats in your trunk.
So, the message board is online? Is that?
No, it's a, we would set up onsite.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I know what you mean, okay, sorry, I got you. I was thinking differently, okay. No, that's great, thank you. I appreciate you thinking about it, and it's a great event, and people really seem to enjoy themselves, the fact that they're staying there and not just getting their candy and going, except for the little kids, I think, but there was, I think they stayed, some people stayed, came at like 5:30 and stayed till 6:45, so. Oh, yeah, yeah. It's hard to keep track, but, so maybe the numbers are a little exaggerated, because they're coming around more than once, but it just is a nice, fun, family event. It's a great area, we have the bathrooms, we have all that stuff, so thank you.
I forgot to ask you about a police detail for the frisbee dogs on the plains.
How do you expect them?
I don't, I have no idea, but the fact that it's on the plains, it might be significant.
All right, how about we make a decision, depending on how much traffic is out there, let's just let it slide?
Okay.
And if it gets to a point where they're parking in the road and I gotta, I gotta do something, then I'll call you and say, unfortunately, we're going to get somebody out there, but we'll try and.
Thank you. I'll step off. Any other questions for Paul?
Can I interrupt one minute?
Sure.
We kind of skipped over the boards and committees. I don't know if Stacy was here to say anything, because we went right into departments. So, I just wanted to check, so she doesn't sit through everything.
Okay, thank you. All right, Paula Mahoney, Finance.
I'm working on gathering all the information for the reviews for the department. I'll be giving that out to the board probably this afternoon, or I'll have it ready in folders for you guys. And employee reviews, I'll have that ready to, for you guys, for everybody to review their employees this week. I am not here this Thursday and Friday, I'm at a conference, and I'm not here next Tuesday, I'm at another seminar. And then our audit is scheduled right now for June 3 to 7, and if anything changes with that, I'll let, let everybody know.
When is it, June what?
3.
That, that week.
Okay.
And I think that's it.
Have you given any thought to going to an annual calendar, or to, not an annual calendar, to a June, July 1 through June 30th calendar for budget purposes?
Yeah, we talked about that with the Budget Committee, so that's something.
It's still on the radar, in other words, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Paula?
Did you decide what type of form you're going to use for the reviews?
For the employees?
Yeah.
I have, it's going to be similar to the one that the employees reviewed you, but it's going to be shortened like that. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Paula. Chief Pellerin.
Excuse me, good morning. Department-wide, nothing major to report, looking, looking at ordering a new ambulance. I had talked about that at the last department head meeting, so depending on what ambulance we go with, could be as long as three years out from the order date to delivery date, or it could be next year, depending on what model. The way fire trucks and ambulances are being done now is the company basically buys a spot in the manufacturing schedule, so that's kind of what you're buying. So, if you go with them, then you get that spot, so. So, I should have enough money in the ambulance fund. If not, I talked to Paula, and we have impact fees that need to be used on a regular basis, because we don't use them in five or six years, I think, then they go back. So, I can probably use some of that fund as well. Fairgrounds public meeting, I'm sure somebody will bring it up, but that's next week.
Next Monday.
Public hearing, so, and then leeway into Summer Fest for us is quickly approaching. We have another meeting today, so talking to Joel about details, Phil about the cow patty, touch truck, bonfire, so a lot of moving parts, but everybody's helping us out, so I appreciate that. I did talk to Phil, I talked to Paul, and I talked to the Kingston Baseball, Sanborn Baseball League. They don't have any events for that weekend at Magnuson Field, and as usual, the carnival is looking to store three or four campers for their employees, so if the town would allow me to utilize Magnuson Field, they don't need water or electricity. I think we've used Magnuson Field before without any major incidences, so.
You just need some porta-potties, I would imagine.
Yeah, we'll probably put one porta-potty down there for them.
Okay.
No, they can use that one.
Great.
We'll pay to get it cleaned. It's June 28th, 29th, and 30th, so, like I said, we kind of have a finalized, not a finalized meeting, but a scheduling meeting today at 1:00. So, if any boards, committees, any nonprofits are interested in setting up a tent or helping us with a dunk tank, we're always looking for people to go in the dunk tank, if anybody knows anybody. I can tell you, the three department heads of Kingston will be in there at some point throughout the weekend, some longer than others, probably, but, so, if, are you, are we good to use Magnuson Field?
Any objections to that, gentlemen, ladies?
Would you like a motion on it?
Sure, that'd be great.
Just for, to be.
Official.
To be official, I'll make a motion to allow, it would be the Fire Association, to allow the Fire Association to utilize Magnuson Field for the dates of?
June, so they're hauling in on the 23rd, so I guess.
June 23rd.
23rd to the 30th.
The 31st, or the 1st.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah, they'll be out Sunday afternoon, but just in case something happens.
So, from June 23rd to May 1st?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
July.
July 1st. We'll get there.
Oh, my God. For the purpose of allowing campers in support of Kingston Fest?
Summer Fest.
Summer Fest.
I think you're, I think you're good.
Is that it? Is that enough?
Thank you. Chuck seconded it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you for that well-worded motion, I appreciate it.
Anything else, Chief?
That's all I got.
Any other questions for the Chief?
When are you planning to, when, are you planning to order the ambulance to go up to bid, or?
So, we've met with three companies thus far, we have two more that we want to get pricing from, and then I'll just come to you guys with PO, because you, you guys have to make the motion to purchase.
To purchase it, yeah.
And to use that money for?
Yeah.
And how do they schedule the payments?
So, typically, what we've done in the past is we, one company, I know I talked to them, and they were, you order it and then pay it the day it gets delivered, so it's, I'm not looking in, because we have the money to cover it, and they usually give you $15,000 to $20,000 off if you pay for it in one lump sum, or, you know, not one lump sum, but pay for it all at once, meaning, you know, a quarter down, a quarter at, you know, when I go down to view it and, and make sure everything's in line, and then the final payment when it gets delivered.
Okay. Great.
Question, Chief? When you place the order, is the price firm?
So, all the other fire chiefs that have ordered vehicles in the last two years, they sign the contract and the price is not firm, there's always a contingency. So, one of the manufacturers that we are looking at, PL Custom, who we have, that's what our two ambulances are now, he puts a $50,000 contingency in there. I have a ma, a major problem with that, because they can just say something came up, right? We have no control over that money. So, another company that we're looking at, they said, you know, the only time that a price change would, would occur is if we place an order right now, but we don't get the cabin chassis, which is the truck part of it, until '25, then it's a '25 model. So, the, he said the only upcharge would be if the next year's truck model would cost more money. He said usually that's like $1,200 to $1,500, but they kind of build a lot of that into their price, so there's a lot of moving parts, but we're trying to get there.
Okay, so, the hope would be that through the work that you do in getting this set up, that if there was any difference in price, it would be minimal?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I think with, you know, an ambulance salesman, has obviously sold many ambulances in the last year, so I would hope that he, he or she would be able to tell me within $5,000, you know, hey, you're going to need, and then I would probably come to you with, with the most that it would cost, to ensure that we have enough money, that it's not going to be any surprises or.
So, are we replacing or adding?
Yes, replacing.
So, what do we do with the old one?
Either trade it in or sell it.
Okay.
Or we can auction it off if that's.
Okay.
But usually, depending on what the trade-in value is, then they'll give us a trade-in value. If we think it's worth more, then we can, we've sold it privately to other towns, we've shipped them out west, so, yeah, whatever gets the biggest bang for our buck.
And if we sold it not as a trade-in, that money goes back into the ambulance fund? Is that right, Paula?
In, in the past, it has come off the top of the price.
Okay.
So, like, when you trade in a car?
No, I, I, if it's not a trade-in and you just sell it.
Oh.
Where does that money go?
I guess it would be unanticipated funds, you could.
General fund.
Dictate where it goes. I would hope it goes back to the ambulance fund, because.
Right.
We took that money out to buy the ambulance.
Right.
But that would be a select board choice.
Okay.
I would hope that that would be the root for the money.
Yeah, 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 I would hope so, too. Okay, thanks.
That's all I got, thank you.
Any other questions for the Chief, Chuck Mahoney, before we go to Chief Johnson?
Hello, I have a lot to report. Chrissy went on vacation last week, and we, Tammy, she's not here, I want to thank her for letting us have Shannon fill in for, we're doing a little cross-training.
Great.
So, Shannon came over to the PD all last week. She trained a couple of days prior, too, just to see what's going on. She did a great job. She, she was outstanding, so I wanted to thank Tammy for that, so I'll welcome her. We're crazy busy this year. Our arrests are up, last year, last year was 75 for the year. We're, I'm sorry, at this time last year, and we're at 105 now, so it's up 30 just already, so I'm expecting a really busy, busy year. Motor vehicle stops, last year, we were at, at this time, we're at 897, we're at 1,410, right? I mean, it's, I don't get it, it's just crazy. Just giving you some numbers, just to let you know where we're at.
The motor vehicle stops, I assume it's speeding?
It's everything.
Everything.
Yes.
So, the arrests, if they're up that much, is there like a particular category that you're making arrests on that's up?
Driving out suspension, DWI's, domestic violence, a lot of mental illness stuff, it's just constant. Graham had the pleasure last week of the only one of mental illness situations.
You have a lot.
Yeah, so, and we showed up at one house three times, he seen him three times, and we're working on fixing that problem with the, with the mom, but we're busy. That's all I got to report.
Glad you have a full staff.
What's that?
Glad you have a full staff.
Oh, me, too, believe me.
Any questions for Chief Johnson?
Two more. That's all I got.
Phil Coombs, Public Works Director.
So, we've been implementing the iWork software, and I just wanted to give, at least for this month, April to date, the number of work orders generated that we worked. So, we had seven for the cemetery, eight for trash and sanitation, 18 in general administration, three for public outreach, four for pest calls, seven stormwater calls, this is typically ditching, catch basin work, 12 potholes, two residential complaints. Storm cleanup, we had 18 work orders generated from that, that was about a week and a half. That was after the April storm. Four signed calls, nine tree work, and these were non-storm-related tree work calls. General maintenance, four, four work orders, and eight permits and two work orders at the landfill. For facilities, there were 19 work orders, and then we had a total of 13 work order requests generated from the system. Just a thing on the work order requests, if it's something inside, like painting or construction inside the building, that's, we have ones that are already scheduled, but the guys are pretty busy outside doing landscaping and things like that, and so it'll be kind of a rainy day request. So, just word to everybody on that, if it can be put off, please hold off until late We have been gathering a lot of e-waste, electronic waste, monitors, computers, things like that, and I think most of them have been picked up by my guys, but if you do have anything, if you can just do a facilities request for that, we'll come pick it up. We have found an avenue to get rid of it, and we got rid of a bunch of the monitors last week at no charge to the town, and we found a fairly significantly discounted e-waste disposal point. Also in sanitation, trash-related, we had the Household Hazardous Waste Event at Plasto, we sent two guys to that, and there were over 300 participants in that. We don't have the breakdown on how many are for Kingston, but good event. Also, we've posted the, I call it the master diversion list, but it's the where can I dispose of list, and that's on the trash and recycling page for the Department of Public Works, and that just tells people where they can take things like mattresses or yard waste or just things like that, and we kind of update that, it's kind of a living document as people ask questions and we find places for those to go, but the goal is to try and get things out of the trash and, and keep our tonnage down. We met last week on the plains electric upgrades for events out there, went over it with Selectman Bakey, so the approach is going to be to do it in two phases, and first phase consisting of the main panel directly in front of the fire station and everything towards the bandstand and directly across from that main panel. And rough estimate at this time is about $9,000 for that. The second phase would be the further end, down towards Ricks, that would be upgraded probably later this summer. The, the first phase we could potentially do before the, what do we call it, Summer But the second phase would be about $6,000, so we're looking at $15,000 total to do that work as, as agreed by the group that was there on that day.
Does that include lights?
That does not include lights, but that would be.
Just the outlets.
It would be panels at locations and then poles mounted, so that if we wanted to run lights, they could be run.
Okay.
From those panels. So, all the underground work would be completed, it would just be above-ground work.
That basically is upgrading the, the system that's there, so that it's now safe, that the initial phase one.
Correct. This would be burying in conduit all of the electrical lines, removing all of the aerials from overhead. There are excess poles that aren't needed, those would be removed, so just cleaning everything up and making sure that it's up to today's codes. And Tom, the electrical inspector, isn't, again, this is a budgetary number, it should be cheaper than this once we get everything put together, but I told Peter I would brief you guys on this, and if you wanted to proceed on that, I know we were looking at ARPA money to be utilized for this, so that's roughly where we're at, what we would need to get that ball rolling on there.
If you get approval soon, and I didn't hear what he said, can it be, can it be done in time for the BFest thing?
Yeah, I would advocate.
The first phase.
If we can get it approved in the next week or two, then we can get those, the conduit put in, and we're in the growing season for grass, so this would be the time to do it, and that's why I would advocate for late fall for the, or the, mid-fall for the second phase, but, yes, it could be done.
I entertain a motion for the first phase if this turns.
Can I, can I just have, so, my only concern is, I know there's only one light there, and it probably isn't very bright. Is it worth doing the extra work to look at lighting, so that we, we have, if, if we do anything now, you're going to delete that light, I'm sure, right? Because it's not safe.
So, it'll still be on that pole, and we'll have a new compliant tie-in point for that, so that could be just plugged into the. So that could be just plugged into the panel.
Okay, so that current light will remain until we figure, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the nine thousand dollars, is that correct? Was that phase one, was nine thousand, or six thousand?
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand, for the first, phase one of the electrical panel updates.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. And that's coming from ARPA funds, right?
ARPA funds. Okay.
And then the...
So that's a go?
That is a go.
The Grace Daly Barn, the gentleman, I see his tractor's there, he said it was, would be the beginning of May when he was starting, so he will need a check for fifty percent down. I know there were some outstanding questions, I think those have all been addressed, so I just wanted to confirm that we are moving on with him, and we can have that ready for him.
Is, what's the piece about that L being separated? Is that still gonna be a problem? Remember that L shape that has to go? You don't want to tell us about it yet?
No, there's... Oh, how much time you got, Eli?
There's an update to that. Go ahead, Bill.
You don't want to tell us.
Would you like us to tell them?
Well, due to changing perspectives, the L is the most important historical building in the town of Kingston, so I spoke with the gentleman, he's able...
That's hyperbole, come on.
Maybe not.
The gentleman is able to do the work with that on there. The structural issues and maintenance issues will still remain from that remaining there, but his attempt is going to be to lift the building from the inside and replace the sills that way, so that the L is not affected and can remain in place.
Okay. Did you want to comment?
I just, I mean, there's been a lot of conversations and meetings about this, so, you know, the original thing was, it needed to be separated for structural concerns, and now it can stay, and we're still gonna have the same problems if it stays, so what happens next year, or the year after, in five years, and we need more money because it stayed?
I'm not even gonna touch that one.
So, I, just throwing that out there.
So are we throwing good money after bad, is that what I'm hearing?
There are problems that will not be addressed by this rehabilitation project.
Right, there are problems that will not be fixed, because the concern was the L, not the barn. So if we continue down this path and don't address the structural problem and just Band-Aid it, we're gonna have a problem again, because we're not addressing, he can only do so much if we keep that L attached to the barn.
So the next question would be, why is the L not being detached? Is it the cost? And it could be as simple as the cost, in that same...
It's not a matter of just cutting it away while he works, it's a matter of that L being there, the runoff towards Depot Road is hitting the side of the barn just constantly. If you go look there, the siding is very punky. The sill underneath is very punky. So that's the main issue that that presents. The other structural issue is the door that goes from the L into the barn had cut a moderately important structural piece of the building, and so there's an opening now. As, to quote the gentleman, he said, "It's not the sort of Damocles hanging over your head, but eventually it will cause a problem." So I think as we go forward to it, and I had requested that he look at potential things we could do to shore up this change, or this modification, and to address it, and we'll see what he comes back with.
Could the barn be lifted and moved somewhere else, in another location, so that structurally would be okay, and we wouldn't have to worry about the L? I mean, I don't know enough about, my ignorance is right there on the table, but can it be moved down the road? I'm not saying now, I'm not saying right now, but...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Because that may be the better solution, to move it to a different location and not worry about that particular structure that goes into the bottom of the barn.
Preferably off of town property?
Yep. Just saying.
Yes, it can be moved, and this will, you know, the barn will stand, and he's putting a new roof on it, and he's doing plenty of other things to address the other issues, but again, these, these two issues will remain as long as that L is attached to it.
So we may have to look at a different, change the paradigm of how we approach it to go forward beyond the barn.
Yeah, those barns are meant to be standalone buildings.
Yeah.
The English barns, that's why they don't have doors on the sides, it's the only entrances...
The front.
Yeah, so, but it's getting fixed, and...
To an eighty percent solution?
Seventy-five.
I, we call it eighty-three.
Not a hundred.
Not a hundred.
Okay.
But that is...
Still progress.
It's meeting the desires and needs of the people who were present that evening, and that's where we're at. But yeah, that's all I had.
I have one question for you. How's the recycling going? I mean, we've changed the scent, you know, the recycling center, people bringing glass and cardboard there, are we reducing the tonnage on the other side, so we're not having the fees we were getting originally?
So we've had two things happen, yes, the tonnage for trash has gone up, and the recycling has gone down.
Yeah.
Not massively, we're averaging between fifty and seventy people per event. This past weekend was, I worked it, and it was well-attended for the first nice day of the year, and everybody being on school vacation, we still got over sixty participants, I think eleven of which were new participants, so we keep track of that, and we have reports that we generate from each one, so that's kind of the key metric that we look at, is are we getting people, new people, to come in? So we are lower, again, it's not huge shifts, but tracking it since we started this in September of last year, we are seeing it go in the right direction. The other thing that has changed is recycling commodity prices have come back up, so our costs for recycling have gone down, not huge, but not a hundred and sixteen dollars a ton extra like they were previously.
Okay, good, good.
It's moving in the right direction.
Good, thank you. Any other questions for Phil?
I have one.
Sure.
We have a lot of, it's about like what we can dispose of, toner for our coffee machines here in the town hall. We don't know how to get rid of them. Do we throw them out, like what?
Staples will take smaller printer cartridges, but I don't know if they'll take the big ones. But I think they, those are all recyclable, so I think they can take those, but I will verify that and let you know.
Okay, thanks.
And last but certainly not least, Pedro Avia, Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer, Pedro.
Hi, good morning. Well, thank you very much for letting me talk. So I see there is a lot of event, I haven't been invited to them, so I'm a little bit upset about that. Therefore, when I bring up that there might be some code out there that might request that you pull a permit on those events, but again, I wasn't invited, I'm just letting you know my authority what, yeah, it goes down. I like you still. Yes, so, and yes, actually, that was one of the things, I was invited to the plane last week, and I said to, especially for the mechanic fair, do they pull a permit? And they said, "What for?" And I said, "Okay, I see where it's going." So, yes, and I explained that there are codes that actually surveil those tenting and things like that for life safety purposes, and that the board might consider looking into that, especially for Kingston days when it's coming, that those vendors come to us, and we can make sure that everything is safe and sound for those people enjoying the event. So with that being said, changing gears, I also wanted to approach the board, I've been revising the schedule fees, and we have been doing comparison with a couple of towns, surrounding towns, Epping, Exeter, Plainstow, Barnstead, we have even checked with Fremont, another, Raymond, I believe he was the other one, and we have realized that our fees are substandard to what is average around it. So I'm proposing a revision of the schedule fees to become public, and also, just to give you a summary, the actual fee schedule for building alone is gonna change a lot. There is gonna be a price increase, it's gonna be a very conservative increase based on what I have seen, and I'm trying to keep everything within the notion of the town that we are and the town that we want. There has been, the only two items that I have added to the list that were not part of the list is a non-refundable application fee, which we don't have at the time, and that fee will serve as a means for, when we get the application, we start the review of the plans, which have been taking a lot of time from the department to address non-co-compliance items. So that's, I'm suggesting a sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents non-refundable application fee. Then the whole fee pricing per thousand has increased to max five seventy-five, five dollars and seventy-five cents per thousand, or par that off, meaning if it is a thousand and ten, ten dollars, that's gonna be based on a two thousand, that way we can round it up to the next thousand portion, and we can make clear and a transparent fee schedule. Fees that pertain to, we used to have a shed fee that's referred to the garage, two different types of structures. A shed can have a foundation on it, or may not have a foundation. A garage, however, on the other hand, you need a foundation, you need sheer walls, you need portal frame wall, but there is a more involved process that pertains to how people are gonna occupy that space, and we have to inspect for those items. And they take time on the field where you're, while you are there inspecting those items, especially if they are putting electricity to those barns. We need to have a UFO ground rod installed in the foundation, and we need to make sure that it projects, and we need to make sure that then the framing crew don't feel that it's an unnecessary pre-bar piece, and they cut it off, and now we have a bigger problem here. So those are the things that we are mitigating through all the fee that were not being surveilled, that take time in the field, and it was unaccounted time, therefore, the way I said, it was representing a cost to the town actually, because we were charging so minimal fee that it was actually being more, it was not cost effectively for the town. It was costing money to the town for having the town resources out there, making sure that things are safe, sound, effective, and they comply with the mandated laws and standards of the state. Also, one thing that we added is the fire plan review fee, which we don't have one. I know the fire department pretty much has their own square, but when we talk about sprinkles and things like that, those are items that take times from the fire department, and they're personal, and we have to account for those things. I'm also, right now, we haven't changed that, we're waiting to implement the online application software, but it's gonna be a mechanism to understand what permits are we issuing the most. We'll be able to quantify pretty much, so that I can be giving you a better detail, a more manageable operational and procedures for the department, so that you can have data that can serve the town to understand what is the benefit that this, this is being, bringing to the town. In my practices, I have also encountered people working without permits, which you work with the individuals, you explain them, it's not that the town wants to charge them for something, it's more the safety behind it. In three instances, there are people that have been building a structure on top of decks, and you see these small six-inch round or eight-inch round piers underneath it, and you say, "Well, now imagine you have a big plane of things, and you have this point on this big plane, and you put something really big on that, what do you think is gonna happen?" It's just gonna try to project down, and so you're gonna have a structure that can signify even the life of an individual that occupies that space. So that's why it's not to charge a fee, it's not to increase a fee, that there is a lot of work that has to be done, and there is a lot that has to be looked at, and there is a lot of orientation in between now and then, that process. So I wanted to keep that very concise and summarized, so I don't know if you have any questions.
Well, I think we're gonna have to see the list.
Yeah.
We can't make a decision without...
I, well, I was told that this will have to go through a public hearing setting, more than anything, and I wanted to...
So we would need to see
Your proposal.
The list based on what you've just discussed.
Beautiful.
And then would, and then discuss that, and once that's agreed to, then set a public hearing date.
Exactly.
Beautiful.
Sure.
Do we have a status on the cloud permitting and where we are?
Yes, so we already commenced communications to, for implementation, they are making communication with the GIS resource that we have for the town, and that is to merge the two platforms, so that when people are applying for a permit, they can pull the information directly from our GIS data field and data maps, which will bring more accurate information to the applicant when, in the time they are filling the application. And that is to the extent of map and lot numbers, proper addresses, ownership, and so forth, and so on, on that application matter. After that, now we're gonna be, I have been modifying all the details, I need to, the fee schedule can be done at the last end. I talked to them about it, they said they don't need it right at the beginning, but they will need at least one week prior to implementation. So that's, it's gonna take four weeks, and we are in our first week, so we got at least three weeks to render an idea of how this is gonna go.
I would suggest getting as your proposed fee schedule ASAP, so we can address it at next week's meeting.
Yep.
And I know Mrs. Merrill wanted to add some planning board chair. Lynn, if you can come forward near a microphone, be great, my Paula would be nice.
One thing you might... One thing you might want to consider in determining the fees is waiving them for any project that has already been approved by the planning board, or has already, their application is into the planning board, because they already base their costs and everything on the currently be-scheduled.
Okay, that's a good point.
So just...
If it's a work in progress, in other words, we may need to waive those particular items.
Just thinking you might want to do that, you don't want to surprise anybody with...
No, no.
Honor the old fees.
Especially, yeah, long-term projects that have yet to come to fruition.
Craft. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Any other comments or questions? We're all set with the department heads, I don't know if any committee member, Lynn or Stacy wanted to add anything as committee chairs? No? Okay. All right, well, we'll go on to regular board business, you're welcome to stay or leave at your leisure. Take a few minutes, you wanna take a break?
I'm good.
No, you're good. Just checking.
Oh, Phil, you're, you have another agenda item.
Yeah, Little Rib, like, 11 Church Street.
Don't move.
Well, I can wait, it's, there's another agenda item from my side as well.
Okay, hang in there, you're welcome to stay with us.
All right.
Paula, you can stay here, you don't have to go back in the audience if you want, it's up to you, but... Okay, well, the building permit item is, needs to be, we need to get the hard copy so that we know what to review, right? Then the next item is the second trash receptacle request for 11 Church Street. Mr. Coombs.
So at one point in time, this gentleman came in because they had been receiving trash service, one of the many non-residential places that were receiving trash pickup under the old system. The board had granted an exemption for this gentleman because it was an owner occupied dwelling, as we had done for other commercial properties in town. He has since last week came in and paid for another trash receptacle, which...
A second one.
A second one, correct. This is, I believe, over... This is, I believe, over a year ago that he had gotten the first one. So this was an exemption, an exception that the board had agreed to. There was no provisions for a second or any further ones. It was specifically pointed out, this was only being done because he was an owner-occupied unit. And when I saw it, I felt that it violated the spirit of the exception that was granted. And so I just wanted to bring this to the board to ensure that my feeling on that was shared.
Right, well, if I'm correct, for, in an apartment building, if you will, four units or more require a bin, a dumpster. And that we made the exception for this gentleman because he was an owner-occupied building. And that was why the board made the exception at that time. But a second trash receptacle subverts that whole thing. He really, if he need, if they're generating that much more waste, then they need to get a dumpster.
Correct.
They have the one receptacle that goes with the owner. That's my opinion because the intent was not to avoid a way to get around not having a dumpster.
And so was a second trash receptacle purchased by the individual?
So the way it works is, is if someone wants an additional recycling bin or a trash bin, they pay at the town clerks and then they coordinate with the public works department to pick it up. So he did pay at the town clerks, but we have not coordinated pickup with him because I wanted to clarify with the board. So we would just have to refund the money.
Yeah.
Well, Kami would not have known, the town clerk's office would not have known.
Which is, which is why going there first is probably not the right.
It should probably be like discussed with public works first and then pay.
So.
You know what I mean? It seems like it's backwards to get approval first that they can do it and then pay for it.
And I think that is what the protocol has been is that people would get approval for a second trash barrel. Recycling bins, they can just go and request a second, or an additional recycling bin. But for trash, it would be reviewed and approved by the select board.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the answer is we should direct the town clerk's office to refund or the finance director to refund that bin. Because he's not going, that won't solve this problem. Okay, does that make sense?
Yep.
Is the board in agreement with that?
Yes.
The bin has not been delivered or picked up, is that correct?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, then yes, then I agree with that.
All right, so that's clear.
Okay, thank you.
We did make the exception. That's all it was, was one exception at the time.
Yeah.
We had a couple of others, I think, odds and ends. But that was the only one like that, owner-occupied apartment building of four or more units.
Yes.
Yeah.
And when you read through the minutes, it was brought up, you know, why don't you have a dumpster? And it was because we produce so little trash and so anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. We have no appointments. Public comment number one, any public comment number one. Unfinished business. Update on the wastewater treatment RFPs, Glenn and Susan.
There's nothing big to report.
Well. It's a night of you.
Well, they're not done, but they did send it back to DES for, we hope, the final time.
Right, Susan and I had a remote, a virtual call with the two individuals from Verdantis, the folks who are working on the RFP for us. They wanted to talk to us before they got back to DES with the final revision of the RFP. There were half a dozen fairly small items at this point. So it's really getting down to the, to the fine print. And so at the end of that call, it was, they, they meaning Verdantis, gave us a prospective schedule, if you will, for releasing the RFP. And this, of course, is based on DES getting back to them and back to us quickly, which we're hoping they will do. But the expectation is that if all goes well, we would be able to release the RFP the first week of May. Right? And there would be a response period for questions in between there and that the final, final due back to us with bids from contractors would be in June. I didn't mark specific dates down because it's, it's going to all depend on how it all flows.
Shift a little bit, yeah.
But, but we're, we're close at this point, so.
Great. That is good news.
I just have a hindsight question. We hire this Verdantis as a professional company to do these things. We assume this isn't their first one. And I'm curious as to what, and they're writing this, they send it to DES. It's gone back four or five times. I don't understand if they, you know, it's not these people's fault because the DES sends it back. But why would it?
Part of it, part of it is because it's not a strict black and white on some of the items in the RFP. Some of it is discretionary on the part of the town. So certain decisions have to be made. Do we want this or do we not want this? It's also partly due to the fact that it's, it's federal grant money. And there are just so many bits and pieces and hoops and curves.
Moving parts.
And getting it right, it's, it's a process. I've got to tell you though, the other piece is that although Verdantis is very good, the bulk of their work is done in Massachusetts. And so they're used to dealing with Mass DEP and not New Hampshire DES. So that has been, I think, just from the conversations that Susan and I have had with them. If they had been a firm that did more work with DES, this might have gone a bit quicker, but.
And it may for the next project.
It would, yes, we have helped the next project along.
Right, right.
And the reason we went to Verdantis is because they, you know, they have worked with us in other areas, so.
Okay. Does that end your question, Jeff?
Yeah, it's crazy.
Anything else? Chief, I'm assuming you wanted us to talk about that fire warden appointment? Because, and I'd be happy to take that out of order so that you don't have to.
Sure, I appreciate that. So really, all that is, I think I presented the last time we were here. But some of the forms weren't, they changed the form. So we use the old form and we had to refill out the new form. So all that, those people are most of my full-time staff that can issue fire permits. I'm the only fire warden in the town that can issue warnings or fines for open burning or illegal burning. But they need paperwork at the state to issue the actual permit, so.
And there are three proposals, Jack Trembley.
Jason Miles.
And Peel. Jason Miles.
Dakota Poole. Yep, so those are my new, the newest full-timers.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify, any questions that you had?
And that's, that's in our folder to be signed, okay. I didn't want to hold you up on this necessarily. So you're good to go.
All right, thank you.
Okay, public comment number two. Okay, any other new business? Or we go right into board business? Budget year-to-date.
Okay, you all have a copy of it, a big copy of it. I've been through it, albeit with a smaller version, so just bear with me a little bit.
Can you read this one?
Kami?
Can you read this one?
I have the big one, but I didn't have it until this morning. So I used yours off the computer to make the notes and it's a little harder to. And it puts it on both sides, so I don't know what side I'm on at what point. But anyway, for the most part, the budget overall is where it, it's like 28%.
So year-to-date, that's good.
There's not a big issue there. However, there is some items that we, we need to look at from a budget committee standpoint. Two big items are dues, which we seem to be in two or three areas, over on dues. Not a lot of money, it's not a lot of money, but we just, either the dues have significantly gone off and the department heads didn't know it. And so we're, we're over on a few of those. And the other, one of the other line items that pops out is supplies in general for the different departments. It's underbudgeted according to this. Now, it could be that they're buying, as Paula does, you know, paper for the year or at least we hope for the year, or they may be buying envelopes. So it puts the percentage up higher now than it should be because they're buying in bulk. But there is a thing we'll have to look at next year based on the actual that are going to come up for this year.
And that may flatten out as the year progresses, so it may not even be an issue come next year.
Well, in some cases, they're already over already, so we can give them any money to buy anything else. So again, it's just, it's not a lot of dollars. It'll all be covered, but it's just something that going forward with the budget committee when they start in November to look at it with the department heads to make them aware of it.
Of course, so you'd want better fiscal documentation.
But for instance, if you, I mean, if we look at the executive, which is the first one there, supplies there is like 68, 65%. Now, it could be ordering a year's worth of envelopes, who knows? Legal ads, that's over by, that's significantly over what was budgeted. I don't know what the executives do for legal ads that we didn't do that right. But, and again, it's all small dollars, but it's points that we have to.
Whenever you have a public hearing that has to go to the paper, I think those have been adding up a little bit. Is that the most of it?
Yeah, and when we did the budget, we had Carriage Town. Now it's, is it Union?
Union leader.
The fees, the fees are different.
Substantial different.
And that all happened in 2024, so it was after the budget was completely created.
Right.
So it's just, again, things that pop out when, if you look at it from a percentage.
Yep, yep.
You know, next year, we got to know that that's what we. The other, and we talked about this, the budget committee salaries. We're going to have to work on that due to the fact that we have Adam televising the Wednesday meetings. So we'll have to work with that. I mean, there's enough money in the budget, budget to cover it, but. Miles and Meals, that's another general issue with a lot of people. Miles and Meals that are up significantly higher than where they should be for the quarter. And again, I don't know if that's budgeting problem or that's just the fact is that Pedro's going. Well, I was just looking at my town clerk, town treasurer has, you know, 90% of the use for miles and meals for whatever that was for. But I think that's going to be, is that the one that you were going to change?
Oh, Miles and Meals.
Nope, I changed that.
Huh?
They, I think they're done with their conferences.
Okay, I don't know. I mean, just again.
Yeah, I think they do most of their conferences like now.
In the spring.
Yeah.
And it should be that this, for instance, if Kami were here, we'd just say that the department heads, when they look at their budget, when they reconcile these, they've got to look at that and say, okay, I don't, somebody wants to go to Concord for two days and it's not in the budget. It's not to say that they shouldn't go. We've just got to figure out what we're going to, what we're going to do with it. Because we want them to go to the training. It's the same with Pedro. Pedro's doing a lot of training. And you look at his training line there and it's up too. But do we do, do we not want them to go? It's just a matter of, we want them to.
No, no, we want people to train and become more professional.
Yeah, yeah. So again, it just, and most other ones, again, it's. My other sheet that I have, I was just, they're out of order, but the fire department is fine. I guess the only question the fire department is their telephone, this telephone internet's up a little bit with the fire department. Again, he just, being on the liaison, make him aware of that, but. So his seminars and training's up. He's over his budget. But I don't think he, I don't, it just doesn't look like he budgeted enough. $378 for training for the fire department guys doesn't, doesn't seem right.
No, they have $5,000. I don't know what your.
Line 424006. Oh, no, cancel that, that's inspector.
That's inspectors.
Yeah, but that same concept, that's with Pedro and he's out the end.
So the thing with the inspectors is we didn't have an inspector when the budget was being made. So we dropped training, we dropped some of the things in there. So.
We underbudgeted there.
Right, because we didn't have anybody.
It was really short.
And we didn't think that we were going to have somebody?
I don't know. I didn't make the budget.
I'm just asking a question.
So, yeah, so, so that's why some of his overages, because he needed to order a certain book.
Of course.
And continue his.
Well, it's not, it's not his fault.
He's licensed, right. It's not his fault, he's licensed, so he had to take.
Right.
I call it continuing ed, whatever courses. So do we do, that's a really good point. Is this just for, do we do the continuing ed for the other inspectors or is it just for Pedro? We don't. Because they have to do it for their own businesses. Okay, but because he's a town employee? Yeah. Okay.
And again, just looking at that one, the supply line there. And I don't know what, I would assume they use towns, you know, envelope from the town, but that's.
I forget what that is. I have to look it up specifically, but.
But it just doesn't, you know, especially the inspectors, because I would assume that envelopes and things all come out of the.
It wasn't that, it was, oh, no, that's the, that's the car.
That's right, yes.
Yes. That's where it had always gone. So when you guys approved to fix the vehicle, that's where we put it for now until we figure out, like, that's like my little placeholder. Where were you putting, when he was getting reimbursed for mileage? What line were you putting that in? That goes under mileage and meals. Oh, I didn't see that, okay. But that's not just his mileage and meals, that's all the inspectors' mileage. Okay, okay.
No, that's right, you told me that, I forgot that. He said, you told me that and I forgot that, but that's. And again, it's just, a lot of it's the first quarter. It's stuff that we know what we need to get caught up on and reclassify.
But as we review it with each quarter, then we get more familiar with the numbers and we watch.
So the supplies under inspectors is the car. That's all that's in there is fixing the car for now. And so we find a place to put it.
Or another line item that would be more appropriate.
Yeah.
So the 127737, that's, that's what it took basically to fix the car, get it running?
Yep.
The other item there on that, under insurance is the deductible we got.
We're just skip to.
Yeah, we're worried.
Under insurance, 4196.
He went backwards.
Well, I only, my, my copy, it did double sided, so I have no way which way I'm going to.
4196, insurance, got it.
Deductible there. And that's, it is what it is.
So that is something that's always hard to budget because some years we don't spend any of it. Some years we go over. It depends on if there were accidents or problems.
So this is vehicle insurance?
Nope, just any, just any, any deductible. So in this case, this specific one that's there is.
Cell station one.
Nope, that's not even any of it. That was a police car.
Oh, that's right, there was, there was a wreck, yeah.
But, but years gone by, we just carried $4,000 for deductible.
Right.
If you have, and if you have a car accident, whatever the $1,000 deductible per accident, whatever it is.
Yep.
So I don't, I don't.
So all the, so what happens is they put the claim, we put the claim in, the insurance will give us the money to replace or repair whatever it is minus $1,000 deductible. But all, the whole expense goes into this.
So some of this is reimbursable money?
I just can't put the money we got back into this line. It goes into.
But when the question comes up at our meeting, because it will, you know, we need to say that.
Know where the revenue went.
It's a thousand bucks.
We have to split the revenue and the expense.
Yes.
You made note of that.
Stacy, come forward.
So for the next one, I think that would help because what we saw when we met with the budget committee to review is we saw that we were over. But it's not really, so it's, the $12,000 is for the full amount that it costs, which makes sense because it's all the appropriations. And then we have a revenue to offset that that went to the general. Okay, so I think it would probably help maybe to look at some of the revenue stuff to give us so we can review on a quarterly basis. So we don't, or we aren't like, wow, what happened? How did we? So we're, we looked at this on Wednesday night and we're trying to just understand where there is any issues and make sure that we're noting them for the next budget.
You know, you know what might be helpful? If we had a list of accounts for the budget committee where revenue goes. In other words, for example, that reimbursement on their vehicle, you know, if there's a list and you could kind of cross-reference, okay, that's over by $12,000, but here's where it went into the deposit. That will allay some of the misunderstanding from budget members who are not familiar with municipal budgeting. That might help clear some of that angst out of the equation.
Yeah, and we do have a few new members right now.
Right, right.
So we're trying to meet earlier so we have a better understanding of how everything. Yeah, and we have, and we do have a few new members right now, so we're, so we're trying to meet earlier, so we have a better understanding of how everything is going, so that when we get into the meat of the things in the fall, that we have a, we know what we're looking at, where the revenue's coming from, what, um, you know, understanding of revolving accounts, because that seems to always trip us.
And I think that, you know, we as a, that work with a budget are not worried about the overage, because we know it's an in and out thing, but the general public, which is where the Budget Committee comes in, they don't have that same sense of feeling, and so there's where a lot of mistrust is generated, and it would be nice to alleviate some of those misjudgments.
Absolutely, and I think, I think meeting more frequently and having these open discussions, um, will help to, to show what we're, how the, how the money is going in and out, and it's not.
It's not at random.
It's not, it's not, yeah, it's not at random, or, or that, I think that that's just what we're trying to review and, and go over from that perspective.
Okay.
Yeah, because my observations over the past year has been that we always talk about expenditures, but we never talk about what we're receiving, and there is, we do have to talk, because that's part of a budget, right? You, you have to take money in, and we never seem to talk about that part of it, so.
And whether it's like ARPA funds and then.
Exactly, right.
And have what the budget knife underneath it, uh, general revenue.
Yes.
So if you actually look at worksheets, we do have a sheet for revenue, and Paul provides us projected revenue. We spend so much time on the expenditures, and we don't spend, um, the same amount of time on the revenue, or, uh, where certain money is coming from, and so I think we're, I think if we work together, we can actually be like, okay, this may be this number, but only, only two thousand dollars of it is really, uh, what we have to raise, because the rest of the money comes from insurance.
And that's the piece that's missing, because most people don't understand that, and we talk about ARPA all the time, and I know that you guys aren't concerned with that, but we, we should have a rec, a, a, a discussion on, because there was another thing today, right? ARPA, we're gonna, ARPA, ARPA, and, and public might not understand what that means, right? It's free money for how long, what are the stipulations?
As Phil calls it, the Santa Claus fund.
Right.
Nice job.
So from, from our perspective, this is not Budget Committee, but we should probably just do a, the next time, just kind of go over that and say, you know, ARPA's this, and this is how we're spending some of it, and this is how much we have left.
So moving along, again, same issue with the police department, mileage and meals, it's over, and supplies are over, or a high percentage, so again, I don't know if they're even aware of it, they do, they reconcile them themselves, right? I mean, normally, they would see this, the big departments do.
Every, uh, at least monthly, if not more often.
What was the other page? Oh, okay, health department, forty-four eleven. Everything else, probably, that's not a problem. It's the water bottle delivery to PFASs.
PFAS, right.
Yeah, unfortunately, we budget it, assuming that that's a, per, per, pre, pre, previous conversation, we were gonna have this thing going sooner, but it's not, so we're going to have to, and I think we figured out it was a thousand dollars a month, roughly, I mean, doing the math on what we did here, um, we're gonna have to figure out there, putting some, uh, the contingent coupon or something to, at some point, cover that till we, till we get going with that. We won't, we won't harass Paul too bad for his over on his Easter egg hunt.
Well, he must have made some money.
Well, there's revenue offset on that one, I think.
Oh, did they pay, I don't know, I have no idea.
Yeah, there, yeah, yeah, there's revenue that comes in for that.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah.
See?
So he's off, he's off for it.
That revenue goes into his revolving account, correct?
That's correct.
That's the revolving fund?
Yes.
This is more the kids' Easter, yeah.
What's the other one?
Forty-five twenty, it's page nine.
Forty-five twenty oh two.
Are you looking at the one I printed today?
Yes.
Yeah, page nine.
Okay.
That's the best one, but I didn't have it in time, so.
Oh, Easter, got it, okay.
The only, the only other, basically, that, that, two other, the only other thing, if you look under the library, and you see, that, that would give you a heart attack, because it's not been done that way in the past, but apparently Paula pays in advance the library.
Yes, so.
And, and I, and my only comment to that, I have to think, and we didn't talk about it the other day, I got thinking about it, being shortfall to pay bills, et cetera. Why wouldn't we just be paying them quarterly, so that this money stays with us as long as it can?
Because that is the agreement that was made whenever, we pay them quarterly.
But you're showing the full amount, right, four thirty-five?
So what I do, so I know the ca, I can keep track of the cash flow at the be, well, for them, the beginning of the year, for the school, um, when I get the breakdown, I put in a payables, what I have to pay monthly and for them quarterly, so that I know what's coming, because it, they're large amounts, so when that happens, it goes directly into the expense account.
So you, you put it on the sheet as, as paid for the year, basically, but, but money-wise, you're only sending them.
Quarterly.
A quarterly.
Yes.
For the library.
A hundred, I, it's a hundred something.
Again, that's just an explanation, if, if the three new members of the Budget Committee looked at that, they would ask the question, and I'm, I'm, I don't recall it in the past ever being that, that way, and maybe it is, you know, last year.
It's been quarterly for a long time.
And I think that this, we, the Budget Committee is actually really digging into this data this year, so it may be something that we didn't necessarily see in previous Budget Committee years, um, but, uh, is that number that you put in there, all the amount, including all the payroll and everything? Because it looks like it's like three times what we're budgeting.
So what she, what happens is she takes the, her budget, the four eighty.
Okay.
And she divides that by four.
Okay.
So it's like a hundred and something a month, a quarter.
Yep.
So I pay that quarterly to her.
Okay.
And then each month, I, once I finished, um, paying the liabilities and stuff for the month, I send her a report saying, this is how much payroll and retirement and all that stuff.
Yes.
Costs, it's like about twenty-eight thousand, twenty, twenty-two to twenty-eight thousand a month, um, she then gives me a check of that amount.
Okay.
And I deposit it, and it goes against, so.
They reimburse the payroll.
So, so it's like a back and forth?
It's a constant back and forth.
Okay.
And then after the budget, it, it's happened that it's after the, um, voting.
Yeah.
She, I don't say, I say she, but it's their board, um, they look to see how much they had left, and then they agree on what to give back from the rest of their budget, so for like, in their budget this year, that ninety-seven thousand, that's their, that's their just operating expenses. So they paid back sixty thou, sixty-one thousand, something like that.
Yeah.
Um, but that includes paying back any extra for payroll items, health insurance, all that stuff, and any expenses that they just didn't.
That's, that's been the highest in, I mean, choosing twenty-five and twenty-seven.
And all those, those ins and outs go into that transfer account.
Go into that transfer account, so it's, so that number, that transfer number, is the ins and outs, and so that nu, number looks so much higher than the reality, and we.
And because for cash flow, my cash flow purposes, I put in for the whole year, all the school monthly, like, I put that in at the.
It's about a million dollars, a million and a half dollars a month, that's the point, right?
So I put that in for, um, six months at a time, because when each tax bill goes out, it adjusts, but, um, I put that in all at once, like, by month, so then I know, okay, this bill is gonna be coming out, you, um, and I'm able to kinda, and I do it the same way for the, the library. So, and when that happens, it's increasing the, the expense line, but the cash hasn't left, if that makes any sense.
Well, that, well, as we'll be able to explain that when they, if that question, no, there's, it's how she carries.
Well, it is explainable, it doesn't, it doesn't mean.
But I mean, if you look at it, if you look at the actual sheet that we got, it looks like we're two, over two hundred thousand over budget.
Right.
As of April, so I think that, you know, we're like, okay, when you see that number, and you're like, what, what happened? And I think, um, I think it's more of, we need a better breakdown of the transfer account, and the library has never really fit into our spreadsheets, and we need to, we actually need to look at it in a different manner.
And, and you have to be sensitive to the fact that the library has different RSAs that regulate how that gets processed.
My breakdown of that one line item.
Yes.
Like, to show the ins and outs, but I don't know if the library will send their breakdown of their budget for their operating.
Because the problem is, we, with this transfer account, it, we do this every year, and the last three years I've been there, I've been trying to push them, at least get the transfer account in November, because the only, only place we can cut the budget, if they was gonna cut the budget, is in that transfer account, and that's the light bill and the heat bill and the cleaning and all that.
And they send that when they send their Excel spreadsheet for their budget.
Yeah, but that's in November, we have no idea right now what it is, because they don't, and they don't, and we've asked them to change it, to make it look like, you know, the library, and you got your payroll and the stuff and all your expenses underneath it, like everybody else has, and for some reason, they don't do that, they won't do that, I don't know why.
Well, I think because it, it.
They don't want to.
Well, it's the bottom, I mean.
And it's not part of.
I think they.
The town budget.
For the budget purposes, I would soon think they would have to submit.
So, so we have a person on Budget Committee that is also, uh, on the library, and they're going to try to get us kind of a history of how everything is happening, so that they can explain it to the Budget Committee, so we can better understand that.
Okay.
And I think that, plus getting your breakdown, um, will probably help us better understand what that number is and how to evaluate it.
And their budgets in the last couple of years has come in right where everybody else has, so if that's been, probably, yes, we've had the knockdown with them, so.
Are they required to give money back at the end of the year?
No.
Okay.
It was, it was an agreement they had with the town a few years ago, that they would, you know, now, yeah.
In particular payroll.
I would question, I, I, sixty-seven thousand dollars is a lot of money, being on a five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollar budget, so I guess, if I'm on the Budget Committee, and I know that's gonna come up, is, how did you go so far off on your budget that you got sixty-seven thousand dollars left over?
For them, most of that sixty-seven was health insurance and stuff, because they base their, they create their, even their payroll part of the budget themselves, um, and they base it on the highest, highest, highest insurance.
Because it could change for any individual, you have no way of knowing that. Which is, which is why every refunds back to the town, and that's only fair.
Yep.
It's, it's different than the books or programming, that type of stuff, I could see them, you know, spending that as, as.
That sixty-seven is mostly in the, um, in the health and FICA, that stuff.
And that's, that's important, that's the biggest, other than the overhead and the heat and so forth, payroll is the biggest expense, and they're fully staffed at this point, but look at the volume of traffic they have going through the library these days, it's phenomenal what, what Melissa and her staff have done, very, very good for Kingston, very good.
Anyway, so that, I mean, that's, for some reason, the library generates a lot of conversation over the years.
It always has, because it, they, they.
Because they're an independent, and, so the only other, the last, last, well, actually, the bottom line is, we're twenty-eight point one percent, I think that's what it says, you know, thirty point one percent of the total budget, which is right in general where it should be. My only last question, Paula, did you, on the bond payment? And we turned back ninety thousand, I think, back to the trustees, the fire department?
I haven't sent them anything yet.
Okay, I'm just, I was, I saw, I made a note to myself saying we were hoping that we would at least make one of those payments out of that money, which would free up whatever that payment is, so you haven't done that yet, okay, this, I don't care, I just, it just, we knew we wanted to do that.
What we're gonna do is, we still have forty thousand in the actual bank account, it's forty-something, um, the bank account for the bond.
Yeah.
So that's where we're gonna use, what we're gonna use the next payment for, and then the rest will go back to the trustees from the infrastructure fund where the, the money came from.
Just, a part of the plan was to use a part of that to make the, one of the payments, that's all.
Because technically, that bond money was supposed to be completely used, but what we did for, to have quick cash, is they kept, um, forty thousand in that bank account, and used forty thousand less than the infrastructure, okay?
Makes, yep, that makes sense. I'll set it.
That's true.
The Budget Committee just had one other, um, I, one of the overtime lines, um, the highway department salaries overtime line, it's, it's almost at fifty percent.
What line was that?
Four-three-one-two dash fifty-two salaries overtime.
I believe that's because it's like, they're guys snowplowing and stuff like that, so that would go down.
They, they get a fee every, they get X amount of dollars every month for six months, I believe.
No, 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 that's different, that's a different line, this is the actual employees, the full-time employees overtime, but it's because of.
Okay, I just, yeah, I, that's what we figured.
Yeah.
But we wanted.
And then it evens out.
And then it evened out, yeah, okay, that's what we figured, that we just.
Overtime for snowplowing.
Overtime for highway.
Highway.
It's, no, no, just the salaries overtime is high, but it's because of their full-timers plow.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Okay, item next, board initiatives, assigned follow-up. Excuse me? Oh, let's not go there.
I know, I know.
I got a surprise on that one, right? Um, okay, uh, we talked about assigning a board member to be responsible for follow-up on the initiatives that we've proposed, and we'll start with the short-term ones first. Okay, the first one is repairing place front steps. Oh, Peter, I mean, Peter's not here, we could put him in. He's vacationing.
Well, who is, who is Phil's liaison?
Me. All right.
Well, I'm just, I'm just.
That's fair, that's fair.
I'm just asking the question.
Yep, no, I got it.
If you don't want it, I'd be more than happy to take it, because I've bitched about this for four years.
Well, I think any, I think any of us would be happy to take it. If you want help, just yell.
Okay, I will.
And then the next one is a conceptual, about concepts, concept guidelines and timeline for a volunteer memorial, I think that has your name all over it.
I totally agree with that.
And the third item was increased community involvement and engagement in town affairs, and, and, I have increased community, increased BOS visibility at other club community events.
I'll do that one.
Okay, but it's all of us as well.
It, it is, and I know that was a thing for both Peter and I, so I think we're gonna collaborate on that, too.
Well, I think we all, I mean, we are all in some way involved with other events and the library stuff, or whatever, so.
So how are you marking that one as far as responsibility?
I have Chuck and then all.
Oh.
Because I think we all own this one.
Well, we do, but as Laurie said, um, she and Peter had really focused on that, and Peter made a, a, a strong statement about it during candidate's night.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Does, did.
But any, but anyway.
But I, I think that, yeah, but you also have an update, improved social media communications, that could be Laurie and Peter, and that one just as easily, because it's a follow-up on number three.
I think we're almost there, though, I think with the website being upgraded and then Facebook presence, because we're not doing Instagram or anything like that, so I could.
No.
Not yet.
No, not today.
So what did you mark down for that one?
Me, yeah.
You?
Laurie, all right.
Yeah.
And then continued progress in PFA's remediation.
Yeah, that's me.
Let's go in. Okay, on long term, we have developed a plan for remodeling and updating town hall, including HVAC, technical and infrastructure, office space, et cetera. Would you like that, Chuck, that'd be great. Number two, continuing complete process to establish a municipal water utility, that's a Glenn one?
That's me. And I have an update for that, for you on that, I don't know if you want an hour when we finish the list.
Let's finish the list.
Okay.
Okay, uh, number three, ex, explore community power options.
That's me again. Well, it's, well, it's, it's gonna be Rick, but, but as you're representative to the Energy Committee, you can put my name to it.
Yeah. Yeah.
But Rick's gonna be uh.
Yep.
Leading the charge on this.
Excellent, excellent.
Yes.
Number four is continue progress on wage matrix and that goes to me, I would assume, which is fine. And continue updating and creating town policies. Well, if we don't put Paul, uh, to Laurie's name, it would be my.
Oh, yeah, he's like, oh, what? Laurie and, Laurie and Susan on that one for sure, but yes.
But we don't wanna overload Susan too much.
No.
The only, the only one I know that, that may, you may wanna really consider is that, is the disposal of town.
Yeah, I have the draft, um, so I'll be working on that probably this week and maybe have something.
With the fire department, we may have something else that we wanna be able to have a process in place. Okay, are we good?
Um, so there's one thing that I, I've been thinking about and it didn't make it on this list, but it was after a couple conversations with um, with Marissa, uh, the Human Services Director. So there's a need developing for a point of contact for elder services beyond human services. Somebody dedicated just for the needs of the um, older community members resident. Um, so I, I think that's something that we need to start thinking about. Um, you know, it would be a similar role as Human Services Director, but it's dedicated purely for elder services. Um, cause there's unique needs and it, it needs to be a dedicated person, so um, I think that's something we need to start having conversations about, um, and figuring out what that looks like.
Isn't the library doing a lot of that stuff now?
Um, but that's the library, there's, there's other needs apart from getting people to the library for activities. There's, there's, you know, liaisons, there's finding out what, what people need. I mean, there's, I, I, I don't know all of it, um, and I think that's why conversations need to be had. It's not, it shouldn't be under the library to handle um, making sure that our older community has access to all of the benefits that they, they need and maybe may not be aware of and.
Or adequate transportation.
Or adequate, adequate transportation and.
The library's doing that, too.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not in favor any, adding anything to this list.
Okay.
We may, that's my personal opinion, and we may eventually need to have someone that's elder affairs, but we're, we're a small town. I, I, I'm not ready to add another social services component to what we're doing, I just think it's too much. I mean, I don't know. I'm not, I'll start with, I'm not in favor of adding to the list, cause there's plenty on this list that need to be addressed. That's not to say that this board can still, you know, it's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Vices can vote, you can make motions, all that good stuff. But I think going into elder affairs, this is not Boston, this is not even Plaskdale in terms of size.
Yeah, but I don't think population, the, the population total has anything to do with it, I think it's more about the demographics of the population.
And then we have to realign priorities. I mean, eighty-five percent of our tax dollars goes to the schools, that has nothing to do with elder services.
Well, that, that's, that, that's actually a really good point, because that, then the elder services aren't being, um, they don't have the person they're looking out for their needs.
Totally agree, but when you have eighty-five percent of our revenue going to the schools that deals with thirty percent of the population, it's a problem.
But that's just completely separate from this, I think. I think what I, I would like to do is just explore conversations with other towns that have that person and see what they do, just see what they do, see what, how many hours a week it is, cause it's not a full-time thing, it would be a point of contact for, I, I mean, I don't even know, I don't know what I don't know.
I think exploring it is great, it doesn't necessarily have to go on the list, but if, uh, you know, Laurie, if you're.
If I have the bandwidth.
If you have the bandwidth and you're interested in doing a little bit of outreach and information gathering, I think that's fine. Because I agree with you, I, I, you know, as a rural community, um, it's, it's really hard for, and, and you know, all the work that, that Melissa has done at the, at the library with regard to forums and such that she's had on this topic, I mean, the, the thing that rises to the top in almost every case is transportation. Uh, because once you stop driving or once you don't have a car.
Yep.
Uh, you can't get to services for medical, for shopping, for socializing, for whatever, and.
I think we're opening a Pandora's box and I'm not in favor of doing that at this time.
I have a question, why isn't it just under human services?
Exactly.
Because she doesn't, right, because there's unique needs and she doesn't have the bandwidth either. I mean, we don't know what we don't know, and it, I don't think conversations hurt to find out what the need is. And, and the library has a lot of great services, but you only know about that if you go to the library. Um, so they don't serve people who don't go to the library. You know, Marissa doesn't know who's out there that she's not reaching, because we don't have somebody dedicated to be a liaison to our fifty-five and older communities, we don't have that, we don't have any of that set up. And we have a, we have an aging population, we need to think about that.
I agree.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, no, no, okay, um.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Um, did you want me to up, do a quick update on the water utility?
Yes, please, you said you had some information.
Well, I did, I, uh, at the last meeting, the board authorized me to contact Attorney Ratigan.
Oh, yes, 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 thank you.
With regard to this, uh, I did, I had a conversation with him, gave him a lot of background, he's already started doing some research. Um, he will incorporate, uh, the, his, his work on this will go into the same, he'll add it to the agreement that he did for the double poll, like polls that we're working on.
Yeah.
So we don't have to do a separate agreement, he's gonna modify that one and so it'll all be under one.
Great.
So I have, uh, I have some homework to do as a result of the conversation I had with him and I, I still need to do that. Um, but as of the end of the day Friday, he had actually done some research and communicated back to me, so um, uh, once I am a little further along, then I'll, I'll make sure that Phil is, is in the loop on this, because he needs to be.
Yep.
Um, and Phil and I have already talked, so it's a, it's, it's a lot of moving parts right now, but at least it's underway. And while I've got the mic, the other piece is the, uh, the issue of the double polls.
Yeah.
I spoke with Attorney Ratigan about that, told him that we have signed off on his, you know, authorizing him to, uh, uh, to work for us on this.
Excellent.
And he, I, I was gonna do it when Phil was here, but he's gone, but I'll be in touch with Phil. Um, Attorney Ratigan wants Phil, our DPW Director, to contact him, Attorney Ratigan, to talk about it and get it underway, so.
Excellent.
So both things are, are in process.
A work in progress.
They are.
Very good. Let's see. Okay, I'm, time to go through the orange folder here, all right. We have the three, the, uh, three appointments of Deputy Forest Firepeople, we have, uh.
Do you want those by motion? Or, or is that not necessary?
I don't know.
The orders you already agreed upon, this is on the wrong form, so you're re-signing.
Oh, all right, so that's an easy one, the next is the, um, is that the timber cut?
Yeah, there's a report of cut for timber.
Yeah, the yield tax on timber cut.
Yeah.
All right, and that's, the amount is two hundred and thirty-five eighty-six, amount of taxes due. Do we need a motion on that, Susan, on the timber cut?
I don't think you usually do, it's just signing to allow the tax bill to go out.
Okay, and then we have the gravel tax levy of two thousand twenty-nine dollars and ten cents for Toro Mayo. And we have the discretionary preservation easement that we approved, right? We already approved that, we just need to sign that.
That's the actual deed.
The actual deed, okay.
And there are two copies there.
And then we have a facilities premises license agreement for the softball practices for uh, Lenovo Field. Lemieux? Can you read that?
Is that Como?
That Como, my goodness.
Yeah.
Jeezum.
That went through recreation.
What is it for?
For softball practices. April twenty-sixth through, uh, August eleventh.
Did Phil sign off on it?
And they all, yes, they had, all three. So that's just a matter of signature there as well. And then we have two appointments to the Budget Committee, Martha Jackless and Tricia Kidd. Okay.
And on the timber tax one, it's from Unitil, so I'm assuming, although it doesn't have the property address, it has tax map, and I'm not sure which it is, but I'm assuming this is for the land that they're clearing for the solar array?
I believe so.
Down off of.
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And we need approval of, of meeting minutes from April twenty-second.
I'll make a motion to approve both the non-public and the public minutes from April twenty-second.
Second.
Is there any corrections or additions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, no, I always have it. And we don't have anything for non-public, is that correct, Susan?
Not that I'm.
I'm not that I'm aware of either.
Right.
Let me just get a few more signed, so I guess we're ready for adjournment or do you have any other business to come before us?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we don't even need a motion to do that.
You, you, you don't, but since you hadn't declared it, Chuck was right on the money.
The meeting is adjourned at eleven.